When he gets here. So, the first item up is a public hearing on the capital improvement program. City manager?
Thank you, mayor. This is a public hearing on the capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2012 to 2017. The CIP is a planning document that forecasts the city's capital needs over a six-year period based on various city-adopted long-range plans, goals, and policies. The Budget Committee reviewed and discussed the CIP at their February 2 meeting, resulting in a recommendation that council approve the CIP. This public hearing is an opportunity for members of the public to provide input prior to council taking action next Monday night.
Thank you, and I'm going to open the hearing. And those wishing to speak during the public hearing must submit a completed request to speak form to the information just prior to the beginning of the public hearing. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. You have three minutes to comment. There are lights on the podium. The yellow light indicates you have 15 seconds to complete your comments, and our commenter knows all of this full well. It's John Borowski.
Good evening. John Borowski, Ward 3. Good evening. I'm here representing the Strong Foundation Foundation. We, and when I say "we," I mean me, we are a grassroots organization that promotes cutting grass, both in our parks and our open spaces. The foundation of the foundation are foundations, both in making sure that you as elected officials maintain and reinforce the city's buildings as a whole, not just their foundations. Above all else are the roofs. I want you to think about the roofs that keep us warm and dry. These also need some TLS, tender-loving shingles.
[laughing].
I don't want to glaze over glazing. The proper type of windows can be a very sustainable solution to high energy costs. And I don't want to get you all steamed up, but as you know, there soon will be no more steam, and that's a very chilling thought. They say the road to ruin is paved with good intentions. At least it's paved. We at the foundation would like to know what the unimproved road to ruin is paved with. My guess, it's warm asphalt pothole fill. Sometimes we just need to slow down, but with the amount of funding in this CIP for traffic calming, or as we're calling it now, neighborhood transportation livability, we won't be slowing down too much in the near future. Tonight, I'm speaking as an advocate for the city's parks, buildings, roads, and other assets that cannot speak for themselves. Please do your best to maintain them at the proper level whenever possible. Overall, the CIP before you for consideration was prepared professionally and reviewed by the Budget Committee, and will be an excellent planning document for you as elected officials, as well as staff to move the city forward in a positive direction. With all that being said, I would be remiss if I didn't bring up the automated car wash at the airport. I did some calculations, and the $2.7 million dedicated to that project, you could hire four people and pay them $60,000 a year in total compensation and employ them for over 11 years. Thank you for listening to me and the foundation. Thanks, you.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing, ask if there are any comments. Seeing none, going to go on to the next public hearing, which is an ordinance providing for withdrawal of annexed properties from the Lane Rural Fire District, the River Road Park and Recreation District, and the River Road Water District. City manager?
Thank you, mayor. This is a public hearing to consider an ordinance to withdraw previously annexed land or territories from public service districts that currently assess taxes on such territories. City council action is scheduled for next Monday, February 28.
Thank you. So again, those wishing to speak during the public hearing must have submitted a request to speak form. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. You have three minutes to speak. There are lights on the podium. The yellow light indicates you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. And so with apologies to the person who signed up, I actually can't read your names. So would you please come forward and speak and introduce yourself? No aspersions by that. I just...
I'm sorry about that. My printing's bad. I'm Dale Weigant. I'm the superintendent of River Road Park and Recreation District. I'm here tonight representing River Road Park and Recreation District in opposing the annexation of district territory located on Linder Lane to the city of Eugene. The Park District, working in cooperation with special districts of Oregon, Lane Rural Fire District, Santa Clara Fire District, and Lane County, have recently sent a letter to the city council asking the city to begin discussions regarding the formation of an urban service agreement between our two entities as required by ORS 195065. ORS 195065 requires units of local government and special districts that provide urban services, including parks and recreation, within an urban growth boundary to enter into an urban service agreement. The continued erosion of our tax base by piecemeal annexation is doing unreparable harm to the district. Therefore, we will be opposing further annexations to the district as required by law, a 195 agreement can be reached. I look forward to meeting with you in the future to solve this situation. Thank you.
Thank you. And close the public hearing and ask if there are any comments from council. Did I... There it comes. Okay. Counselor Ortiz.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
I turned the mute button on. City manager, can you give us some background on this? Are we speaking to the property that was in our packet, the industrial, Airport Industrial Properties?
The property actually that's referenced is the Linder Lane property, which is Gamicchi, I believe is the name. Sorry. Juduchi Elms, actually, is the property out on Linder Lane. There are two properties that have been annexed in 2010. The other one is the Airport Industrial Properties.
You say those properties again.
It's the Juduchi Elms property at 195 Linder Drive, and the Airport Industrial Properties on Airport Road. The one that the gentleman just spoke to was the Linder Drive.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, because so that's a... So, thank you for that explanation. I was just trying to clarify what properties we were speaking of. There are two properties in the AIS. The Airport Road one, John, can you please give us kind of a little bit of background on that one for the public?
Off the bell, can you do that?
Or staff?
Sure. So Airport Industrial Properties was annexed in 2010. Again, that's out Airport Road vicinity. And that particular piece of property actually regarded the different special service districts than the one that the gentleman just spoke to, including... Let me just double-check as to the particular service districts. The Lane Rural Fire District actually is not included in the River Road Park and Recreation District or the River Road Water District.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional information?
No, I just wanted to make a comment that we do not... The city of Eugene does not encourage annexation. This is property owner's choice to do this. Is that correct? Or is it because they fall under the guideline of a building permit, for instance?
That is correct. These were voluntary annexations.
Okay.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you, mayor. Mr. City Manager, Mr. Weigant mentioned the 195 special district agreements, and I know that that was the subject of a letter from the county commissioners at one point this last year. And I know that you had mentioned a desire to sit down and work with them. Have you scheduled some time with some of those special district folks to sit down and begin some discussions?
Haven't scheduled a time yet. We are identifying our lead staff person, and we'll be talking with that person this week. And then we will be scheduling the meetings with the individual districts.
Could you let me know when you have those meetings scheduled?
Absolutely.
Just because I have a lot of constituents that ask me about that, too.
Yeah, you bet.
And I mentioned that I knew you guys were wanting to sit down with them, so I want to be able to follow up with them about when that's going to happen.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. I don't see anyone else to queue, so thank you. And with that, we'll go on to the next public hearing, and that is an ordinance adopting hazardous substance user fees for the fiscal year. City manager?
Thank you, mayor. The city's Toxics Right to Know program is fully funded by fees assessed to local businesses that are hazardous substance users in accordance with provisions of the Eugene City Charter and City Code. Each year, the city council approves fees to support this program by ordinance. The purpose of this public hearing and possible council action is to pass the ordinance adopting hazardous substance user fees for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2011.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to open the hearing. And those wishing to speak again have submitted a complete request to speak form, and when you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, your ward if you know it. You have three minutes. Lights on the podium. Yellow light indicates you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. We have two people signed up to speak. First is Joanne Ernst, and then that's following her is Lisa Arkin.
Good evening. Joanne Ernst, 1295 Buck Street, Eugene. I am here tonight to talk about the Toxics Right to Know program. Last year, I offered to do some volunteer work for the Oregon Toxics Alliance and was given the task to write a report summing up four years of data from the Toxics Right to Know webpage. Living in West Eugene and working as a chemist made the project of interest to me. Every three years, OTA prepares a summary for the city council on the Right to Know program. The report you were given tonight is a brief summary of the air pollution information available to the public via the Toxics Right to Know program database for reporting years 2005 to 2009. Some data from the Environmental Protection Agency's toxic release inventory is included for comparisons. For this report, the Toxics Right to Know is based on the simple belief that all of us have the right to breathe clean air. In order to guarantee this right to communities, the public must have the ability to learn about the toxic materials admitted. What is unique about the city of Eugene's toxic Right to Know website and database is that it provides information about local business admissions in a mass balance format, meaning inputs and outputs must balance. The Toxics program requires that all hazardous substance users within the city limits file an annual materials balance report. Once a company has done the work necessary to accumulate this data for the Toxics Right to Know program, it makes it easy for them to use this for other reporting agencies, such as the Fire Marshal and Toxic Release Inventory. For the years 2005 through 2008, the output to the air in the city of Eugene was over 3,314 pounds of toxins. This is approximately 829,000 pounds per year. In comparison, the Environmental Protection Agency's statewide toxic release inventory, which has similar criteria for reporting, shows just a little over a million pounds. Since the Toxics Right to Know database is just for the city of Eugene, it is most likely more accurate to the real amount. This is one reason why it is important to maintain a local database. One of the most important points to come out of this report is that 94.4 percent of these toxic air admissions happen in the 97402 zip code, which is in West Eugene. Lisa Arkin from the Oregon Toxics Alliance will talk more about this. The report also includes a list of chemicals admitted, what is known about these chemicals, and the associated health risks from exposure to them. Air pollution can affect people and animals' health in many ways. Some individuals are much more sensitive to pollutants than are others. Young children and the elderly often suffer more from air pollution. People with health problems such as asthma and heart and lung disease may also suffer more when the air is polluted. In order to make informed decisions about how to stay healthy in a world where air pollution is a reality, a program like the Toxics Right to Know is very much necessary. The city of Eugene needs to continue to support this program. OTA supports staff's recommendation on fee structure to continue the Toxics reporting. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Arkin is next.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Arkin, 1192 Lawrence Street. I'm here for Oregon Toxics Alliance. And I want to direct your attention both to the report that Joanne referred to and the separate sheet that shows a comparison between what's reported through the federal government, what's reported by the Eugene Toxics Right to Know program for 97402, West Eugene, and comparing that to 97401, I think is on your chart. And you'll see there's quite a difference. In one, in 2005, over a million pounds compared to 770 pounds in East Eugene. For the year 2008, almost 500,000 pounds of toxins in West Eugene compared to zero in East Eugene. So this kind of data is very important when we talk about sustainable Eugene and two legs of the stool, social equity and the environment. We're talking about a very big difference in exposure. And we see that this is important for environmental health tracking as well. According to the Bethel School District, over 13 percent of the students there have asthma. That's almost double the national asthma rate for children, which is only 7.5. A recent door-to-door survey in West Eugene indicates that perhaps as many as 30 percent of the households have problems of asthma symptoms. So what is in our air is connected with what is in our health. This kind of data is also important for the Envision Eugene process because part of that is looking for infill and looking to perhaps develop brownfields for industrial or commercial purposes. So we need to know what's out there as well. As we plan for expanding our communities and integrating land use and ensuring a healthy and sustainable community, the Eugene Toxics Right to Know program provides us exactly with the kind of data that we need to do that wisely. So we do support staff recommendation. We support the program. And we also draw your attention to our recommendations, especially number four, which is that the city of Eugene should require businesses that put out this amount of toxins in their environment to have an emergency preparedness plan, very much like our food security preparedness plan. We need to know what we should do if there was ever a release, accidental release. And we also recommend that all industries in the UGB should report to this program as we look toward the UGV to create homes, businesses, and more jobs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to close the hearing and ask if there are questions or comment. Counselor Ortiz?
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, Lisa and Joanne, for coming and sharing this information with us. I just have a couple of questions. I guess I just have a couple of requests from Oregon Toxics Alliance. You did a study that you did and the report that you gave out to the ABC group a while back. I was hoping at some point to get the PowerPoint that was shared and the information, and it's been kind of hard to come by. So if you could share... It's on your website. Okay. That's good to know. And I just want to just kind of... I think that this program... I support the motion by staff, but I think that this program works hand-in-hand with El Rapa. And I'm really, really hopeful that in the future, we can continue to encourage El Rapa to continue their work. I think that Oregon Toxics Alliance is advocacy piece and the piece that works with community, and El Rapa's the piece that works with business. And I think they complement each other, the programs. So I'm personally glad, and it's interesting. Thanks for the background information. I know that there's a lot of... I had no idea that 90... What is it? 94 percent? 97 percent? 94 percent of the businesses that are in this program are in my zip code. Thank you.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you, mayor. I got an interesting communication from one of my constituents today, and I hadn't really looked into this as thoroughly as I probably should, so I did. And what I find is that in the city charter, in section 54, in article 1, section 1, and 1B, says that the citizens have a fundamental right to know the identity and amount of toxic chemicals that are released into the workplace, air, water, and soil. And I agree with that. And I agree that listing these things is important for people to understand what they're dealing with. But interestingly enough, to me, section 2.2 exempts all public agencies and educational institutions in the area. Now, one of my questions, I know that, for example, I think, I may be wrong about this, but I think, for example, chlorine was added to the substances list some time ago. My guess is that the city of Eugene uses a pretty good quantity of that. So my question is this. I'd like to have a memo, if I could, on the amounts or the estimated amounts of some of these chemicals that public organizations in our area use that are exempt from this part of the charter, specifically the city and the university, if I could.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Farr?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just very briefly, no questions, just a public thank you to Lisa for the great presentation last week to active Bethel citizens. Madam Mayor, we had a great group at the ABC meeting, and Lisa held people right on the edge of the seat for the entire evening, so thank you very much for being there.
Thank you. Counselor Ortiz?
City manager, do we have any staff here to speak to this at all? The reason I ask is because my memory is kind of cloudy now. Do not every business in any footprint have to have an emergency plan and list the chemicals that are in there that they use? I know that the hospital used to have these big old notebooks, and that people used to come through and put all the different chemicals that they were being using. It was updated like every six months. I imagine that's all now electronic, and I'm just wondering if that's still what happens.
If I can just ask... Mark, do you know? I'm the new staff person, so I'm learning along with everybody else.
Emergency plans for a business...
Could you introduce yourself, please?
I'm sorry. Mark Walker, deputy chief with Eugene and Springfield Fire Departments. The emergency plans for businesses are dependent on the size of the business, as well as what they have. I don't have that on memory, but I can certainly get with our fire marshal, who would have that information.
It'd be nice to just have an update as to how that works, because there is tracking for all that, because there used to be.
Just to clarify, you're specifically asking about which businesses would have an emergency plan, or...
I was under the impression that every business had to have an emergency plan, or at least a list of the chemicals that their employees could possibly be exposed to in the case of an accident. So when they were traded at the emergency room, we would know what they were exposed to and how to react to that hazmat issue.
Yeah. What you're referring to, I believe, is the MSDS sheets?
Yes, correct. Thank you.
And that would be an OSHA item, so I will have to look into that for you.
Okay.
But I can get a lead on that for the council.
Do something simple.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, I'll close that hearing, and we're done. And we're going to move now... We're not going to go into our third... Our fifth hearing. We're going to now move over to the action item on the city income tax for local schools and... On what first? We don't take...
I'm going to say no action.
Okay. All right. So Counselor Brown, you want to introduce your...
Yes, thank you, mayor. I move to adopt resolution number 5024 in order to amend resolution number 5023, which referred a temporary local income tax ballot measure to the voters. And if I get a second, I'd like to speak to it.
Moved and seconded.
The resolution number 5023 that we passed last Monday was deeply dissatisfying to me in that I don't feel that it reflected community values. I'm not exactly sure how we ended up with that product, but thank goodness there was a chance to correct it. So working with the city attorney and with working with Sue Cutso, George, and Tyler Miller, we were... The group of us, we were able to revisit that and rework it and come up with, I believe, a much fairer and more rational scheme for... One that is progressive, one that exempts people in poverty, below the poverty line. And so that's the alternative that you see, and this is what we'll be voting on tonight. And it's not tremendously different. There was a little glitch today, and there was a little mistake with the program. We got that figured out. This is slightly different from the one that you saw last week. The values are very similar, though, and so there's nothing out of line with the first one. So I feel that this better reflects the intentions of the proponents, because it is temporary, it's moderate, it's progressive. There's progressivity there. There was none in the other... In the other measure. And the lowest incomes do not pay. It doesn't penalize those of low income, so that's my introduction.
Okay. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, mayor. It seems to me, as a matter of form and process, that if we're going to reconsider a resolution that we passed the other night, that we should first be passing a resolution to reconsider what we passed the other night. And so I move to reconsider the other night's motion.
I'd like to ask...
I'll second that.
As a substitute to this motion.
Been moved and seconded, I heard. Yes.
Mayor, a motion to reconsider is in order only if it's raised at the next council meeting, which would have been last Wednesday. And so when Counselor Brown asked about how to adjust the resolution, what I informed him is he needed to adopt, or the council needed to adopt, a new resolution amending the last one. So you can't move to reconsider. The time to have moved to reconsider would have been last Wednesday, because that was the council meeting.
Even under a constrained agenda that we had on Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay.
So just out of order, and we're back to the resolution before us, right?
Correct. And mayor, if I can clarify, it's my understanding, Counselor Brown, that the resolution that you were referring to is the one that was emailed out today, and that's at your places now.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you for that. Any further comments from anyone? Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I just wanted to understand how it is that this process works, that we can pass or vote on a resolution that amends without... I'm having a difficult time understanding the process here, if you will. This is just a slight amendment, but the work that you've already done and the deadlines that we were under at the last meeting no longer apply, or they're... Could you help me understand process here a little bit?
The... A couple of responses. First, one of the deadlines that I'm under is to get a ballot title out within five business days of the time that you refer a measure. Five business days is today, and as soon as this item is over, I'm going to go finalize the ballot title. The more general deadlines that we told you about, why you needed to initially act by February... Before February 15, is because of the timelines in the code related to the voter's pamphlet process, as well as the timeline related to ballot title. I need to draft the ballot title, certify it, so people have an opportunity to review it, appeal it, get a court to rule on it, and get the final ballot title to link county by March 17. So you're able to amend this resolution tonight and still affect the ballot title that I'm going to write. If you didn't do this tonight, I would certify a ballot title today, which would make it far more problematic for you to have done something, say tomorrow.
My challenge, too, is the fact that we were told the other night that we were under a certain deadline of having to do it that evening, rather than take some time to craft this more carefully. But it seems as though we now have the time that we didn't have before. Can you help me understand that?
By work... By adopting it last week, you started the process to deal with the voter's pamphlet and the ballot title. So if you didn't do anything until today, I mean, if you had not acted last week and you didn't do anything until today, then we would not have started that process of getting the advertisement in the paper for the opponent's committee for the voter's pamphlet, getting the ballot title started. So all of that is going on. That's why we needed you to start last week.
Okay. Thank you. One of the things I wanted to say tonight, too, was that I've received a good deal of email and input from a lot of people in my ward and a lot of constituents that had some real concerns with the way I voted before. I have some concerns around these changes, but I wanted to make it perfectly clear that what I had done in the previous vote was say that I may not be in favor... In fact, I'm not in favor of this solution as something that will actually fix the problem that our schools are facing, and I think it's fun... schools are facing and I think it's fundamentally unfair as a measure. But just because I was against it didn't mean that I was going to keep everybody else in my ward from being able to vote one way or another on it. But I've gotten a good deal of input from people in my ward that they wish I hadn't voted that way. So I'm feeling a little bit of concern about what we're doing here today and I don't think I can support this particular change.
So just a counsel polling. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. The other day when we voted on this, I was opposed to the putting it out in May. I'd rather see it go out in November if it had to go out at all. I'm actually opposed to the ballot measure itself. As far as the motion that's on the table now, I think it's unfair. I think it just makes it kind of clouds the issue a little bit. I think having a flat rate is a better way. And as I stated the other night, that if you earn a dollar, you better be kicking some money into this tax if it passes. So I'm going to vote against this because my opinion has not changed since the other night.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you. Mr. Manager, one of the other things that I've heard a lot of people talk about with this was some questions around how it'd work and I know some of that will be brought out probably in what will be a campaign. But my understanding of this is this is not something that will be deducted from people's income at work. This is something they're going to have to actively write a check for once a year. They're going to have to save to be able to do it or whatever manner they do to be able to pay this. And we're going to have to set up an entire new city department in order to set out, to bill people for this tax and work on the collection. Is that true?
To the last question that you asked, it's possible that the city will have to set up a unit to do the collection and implementation, but the first choice will be to contract with either the City of Portland, which administered Multnomah County's income tax, or the state to administer it for us. Those conversations have just begun, so we don't know whether it will be possible to arrange that. But that would certainly be preferable to the city sending, setting up its own...
Either way, it's not going to be like deducted from somebody's check at work. This is something they're going to have to write a check for, they're going to be billed for, right?
And in terms of that question, we're just beginning to work on the ordinance that we'll bring to you, probably for a public hearing right after your break. That ordinance will address it. I'm not sure how Multnomah County handled that. It's possible that employers will be asked to, you know, if employees want it, to do withholding, but we certainly can't require all employers to do that because there are some people who work outside the city for employers, say in Springfield or Salem or someplace else, and the city council doesn't have the authority to require somebody, an employer outside the city, to withhold. So there will be some employees who will, yes, have to write a check.
Are we going to have an estimate on the amount it will cost for us to administer this?
Once we have determined whether we can contract with City of Portland or the state to administer it for us, yes, we will. And we anticipate having that information by the time we bring you the proposed ordinance in April.
Okay.
So you would have it before the election.
My other question, I think, is for Sue, which is these new numbers here, do these factor in tax avoidance or tax evasion in order to get to the $16 million number?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. And then lastly, the Chamber of Commerce had an economic summit and our city manager did a wonderful job speaking there the other day. One of the things I learned during that was that the state of Oregon has the highest rate of income tax in the country, of any state. And since ours, if this were to pass, would be the only city in Oregon with an income tax, it would give us the distinction as the city in the entire United States with the highest income tax rates. And that's a distinction I'm not really interested in us having. Thank you.
Counselor Zelenka?
Well, overall taxation for the state of Oregon is that we are ranked 26th out of 50, so we're right in the middle of the pack. The reason we have a high income tax rate is because we don't have a sales tax as other states do. So the three-legged stool doesn't apply in Oregon, so our two other taxes have to make up for the difference of not having a sales tax like most other states do. So again, we're 26th, so we're right in the middle of the pack. We're not a, we're not a high-tax state. Question I had was how was the exemption determined, the level of the exemption at 22,000 Oregon taxable income or 31,000 adjusted gross income?
That's determined as the federal poverty level for a family of four.
So what this does, so what this does in effect is exempt people who are below the poverty line from having to pay this tax, which I think is immensely fair. And again, this isn't the new tax, as I understand it. Multnomah County, as the city attorney just mentioned, has done this before and so the mechanisms for doing it are known and have been done before. And we're not going to create a giant bureaucracy around this, I doubt very much. And knowing the city manager, I doubt that would occur anyway. Overall, I like the proposal. I'm going to support it. It's more in line with my original idea of how to do this, so I'll support the proposal as proposed by Counselor Brown.
Counselor Farr?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Clearly, some unanswered questions remain regarding how the tax is going to be collected. And there are questions that I can't put you on the spot and demand an answer right now because we simply don't have the answers. Those answers will come out between now and the time the ordinance is written, I suspect. So we will know how the tax is going to be collected, whether we have to do it, whether the state does it, whether we use the Multnomah County model or whether we develop our own model. Those questions aren't new questions. We brought those questions up last week and I don't need any further answers on those. I still remain concerned and I do believe that November would have been a better time because it would have given us a greater opportunity to have the questions answered more clearly before moving forward. So other questions that I had have been answered. My vote hasn't changed from the vote I made last week. I believe a lot of the questions that remain unanswered will be answered between now and the time people have a chance to vote, so people will have an educated decision regarding whether or not to support the tax. The one thing that does remain troublesome to me is the fact that win or lose or pass or no pass at the ballot box, the city is responsible for the cost of placing it on the ballot, one way or another. And I would be, I would feel a lot better about it if we could pass along the cost if the ballot measure passes, but I don't know if we have a mechanism to pass it along if it passes and absorb it if it doesn't pass. So, and this late, it's probably not the time to bring that up. We did have a vote on it and I lost on that particular vote at the last meeting. Regarding the graduated nature of the proposed amendment, I'm in favor of people below the poverty line not being assessed taxes on this. I don't like income taxes, further income taxes. We are, as Counselor Clark has stated, the highest state in the nation, notwithstanding other fees are lower than other states and notwithstanding the fact that we don't have a sales tax. We still are the highest state in the nation on income tax and we continue to ask people for more income taxes and it's just not a good way to fund sustainable services. It wasn't last week and it still isn't this week. But that being said, with a lot of the people who are struggling below the poverty line, they're having trouble putting food on the table already. And I'm really reluctant to ask people who currently are skipping meals because they don't have enough money to pay additional taxes. That is why I will support Counselor Brown's motion to amend tonight and it is because the people who really need the assistance the most will be exempted from paying this additional tax. That being said, I still don't like having an income tax as a means of a stopgap or an ongoing way of funding schools or any other form of government.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments I will make is that I actually think that the one thing we all agree on up here is that we care about our schools and we care about our city's well-being and we care about the future of our kids. This income tax is being proposed because we've had many, many people from our community who asked us to step up and help. It has never been seen as, and still is not seen, as a fix to the public school funding issue. It is a bridge till we can figure out how we're going to get that done and that has to happen at the state level. I certainly appreciate that Counselor Brown's effort to make it more progressive. I think it makes it more humane. And then I would say about the income tax issue, when we were listening to the economists, what they said was that they didn't think a state income tax was the right way to address the state funding issue. But they also said, and they didn't want to actually get into the local one, but we have reports from economists here who have said, when you sort of balance out doing this versus not dealing with the school funding issue, that you really find that investing and working on our school funding issue will pay off for our community. And I just, the final thing I want to say is that in terms of the timing, what we heard from our school districts is November would not be helpful, May would be helpful, and that's why May has been the date and why it's so important. So now I think we're ready to vote on this. Would you please vote? So we have six in favor and two in opposition. It passes. Thank you all very much. Work lies ahead. So we're going to move on to our next item on the agenda and that is the public hearing on Envision Eugene. City Manager, you want to introduce the topic?
Thank you, Mayor. Envision Eugene has been working with the community over the past nine months to identify a common vision for our community's future. We have identified seven pillars or goals to guide a draft plan and prepared a set of strategies and tactics to guide growth over the next 20 years. Tonight is an opportunity to hear from the public what they think about the proposal we put out on February 2nd. Comments tonight will help inform your decision-making at your scheduled March 9th work session. We will forward all written comments on the draft to you as well in advance of that work session. Once you have a chance to act, we will hold a second public hearing in the April-May timeframe during a six-week comment period on your version of the proposal.
Thank you. And with that, I'm going to open the public hearing. And again, those wishing to speak have submitted a completed request to speak form. When they come to the podium, you're supposed to give your name, your city of residence and for Eugene, residence, your ward, if known. You have three minutes. Lights will come on. The yellow light indicates you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of three minutes and we have 11 people signed up to speak. First up is Elaine Zablocki, followed by Mark Robinowitz. Welcome.
Elaine Zablocki, Eugene, Ward 2. I've been very impressed by what I've heard about Envision Eugene. I've attended some of the public meetings and Southeast Neighbors has also held meetings to discuss these plans. I hope these ideas will become a reality, in particular, the idea of channeling growth towards the inner part of the city. This shortens transportation distances. I've been very impressed as I learn about the ways of channeling that growth through incentives, transition zones between mixed-use and residential areas. The planning department can tell you better than I can all the technical things they've come up with to make this a reality, but I've heard some very good ideas. 20-minute neighborhoods, a higher proportion of forms of housing, innovative forms of housing, business on the ground floor, apartments above, apartments, duplexes, perhaps lowering, certainly lowering the percentage of single-family homes. And if we do these things, then we can house expected population growth without needing to expand the urban growth boundaries. When I attended my first large meeting on this subject, the thing that kicked it off, what I was very struck by was the tone was based on previous trends. The speakers were sort of assuming previous trends are going to continue and we need to prepare for that. Right now, when I'm planning my personal life, I'm not assuming that the previous trends of my lifetime, I'm not expecting those trends to continue for the next 20 or 30 years. And you may already be thinking in these terms, but if you're not, we're experiencing hard times. The previous discussion, we all know that we're experiencing hard times, but we all sort of hope, expect, pray that we're going to return to normal, to what we think of as normal. It may be that what was normal 10 or 15 years ago isn't what we're all going to live with over the next 20 years. And it's only common prudence as a family, as a business and as a city council to put some percentage of our energy into just thinking about, if things don't go the way we want, difficult times, how can we handle difficult times creatively, gracefully, bravely? So I'm trying to do this in my own life. This is the start of a conversation. If we had more time, I could give you more details, but please think about this.
Thank you. Mark Robinowitz is next, followed by Jan Wassman.
Mark Robinowitz, sustaineugene.org. Energy volatility is a nice euphemism in the report summary. You need to have experts on energy supplies and availability in your committee of participants. Otherwise, you risk repeating the West Eugene Collaborative, which declined to invite any West 11th businesses into your committee to discuss what to do with West 11th. Garbage in, garbage out is a term that describes faulty planning processes that begin with erroneous assumptions. For example, the Land Council of Governments in 2004 said that gasoline prices in Eugene would rise to $2.50 a gallon by the year 2025, only 19 and a half years off. In this kind of error, there's no corrections, there's no accountability, there's no replacing of staff who come up with this nonsense on our dime and people wonder why there's an anti-tax movement. The Parkway traffic studies in 1997 predicted traffic would increase ad infinitum to the point where West 11th would become impossibly clogged by basically today. ODOT says traffic levels have peaked. The price of oil went up. Who would have imagined that the price of oil would rise if we hit peak oil? You need to include peak oil. You need to include the fact that the Alaska pipeline peaked in 1988, 21 years ago. By 2030, when your proposal is for, Alaska will be over as an oil-producing province. We're not drilling oil in Pennsylvania anymore either where all this started. You cannot drill for oil that does not exist. We have zero oil in Oregon, we have zero oil in Washington. If there was an earthquake in Alaska, what part of the world is going to give up their oil so we can drive on the Belt Line? And if you've noticed the news in the last couple of weeks, there is a little kerfluffle going on in the Middle East. And if Libya, for example, shut down their oil exports because of their civil war that they're having, we would all be living very differently within hours or days here. There's no planning for that, at least no public planning. So planning that all this growth and endless growth and smart growth is going to keep going is, sounds very nice, but it's not correlated with physical reality. And two final points. One is electric cars are often touted as a replacement for all of this, but they're a distraction because you can't even get most people to buy rechargeable flashlights for, rechargeable batteries for flashlights. Is AAA going to have tow trucks with giant generators to recharge electric cars that run out of power? And the last point, energy creates money. This is not a cyclical recession. It's a permanent condition, a contraction caused by reaching the limits to growth on a finite planet. We have a debt and monetary system that requires exponential growth. It's basic high school math concept and that can't continue anymore. We have tremendous resources, but if we use them to plan for increasing growth, it's not physically possible.
Next is Jan Wassman, followed by Paul Conting.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Jan Wassman. I live in the Laurel Hill Valley, which is part of Ward 3. I guess the document before you this evening is what's colloquial called the Seven Pillars document. And there's one of those pillars that I want to address this evening and that is the one that reads, "Protect, Repair, and Enhance Neighborhood Livability." For us in the neighborhoods, that's one of the more important ones in this document. There are two strategies under that pillar that I want to call your attention to. One that reads, "Complete the In-Fill Compatibility Standards." And to us, that is an incredibly important strategy. important strategy. And I want you to be aware that despite hundreds of hours of volunteer time and staff time that has been spent on infill compatibility standards, the project to date, very little of that work has actually been adopted by you. So I urge you very strongly to keep an eye on that process and to make sure that as soon as we finish Envision Eugene, that gets put back on the planning staff's work plan, because all the important pieces of work that were started in that project, the vast majority of them, and particularly the ones that affect the neighborhood where I live, that has to do with resource protection, tree ordinance, and the livability that is important to the more rurally-oriented neighborhoods, all of that work is unfinished. So I strongly urge you to hold the planning staff's feet to the fire and make sure we get back to that process and get it finished and get that work before you for adoption. The second point that I want to draw your attention to in the document is, has to do with the Opportunity Siting process. As you read through that strategy, one of the things it says is sites can be located in any residential area, as long as sites are identified through a collaborative process. Now surely that's not right. If, if there's anything that we've learned from the extensive conversations we've had around Envision Eugene is that it really does matter where high-density residential development occurs in an, in an urban setting. And I think that the majority of the conversations reached the conclusion that the appropriate place to have high-density residential development is in the inner-city core and along transportation corridors. So, I urge you to keep an eye on Opportunity Siting and make sure that doesn't slip sideways and become kind of a loophole where we can suddenly put high-density residential anywhere in our community, because that's not the conclusion that the majority of us have reached.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Paul Conti is next, followed by Tim Schenenberg.
Good evening. My name is Paul Conti. I'm in Ward 1, and I'm currently the Chair of the Jefferson Westside Neighbors, and I'm speaking in that capacity. The Envision Eugene process has been a difficult one for JWN members to engage in. Although there were three public meetings in May and June last year and an open house in October, as far as I can tell, these events produced no substantive work products that were of particular interest to residents or businesses in the JWN or other neighborhoods. The small group known as the Community Resource Group dominated most of the Envision Eugene process for the seven months of July through January. However, it wasn't at all practical for most JWN members to spend the required hours upon hours of CRG meetings scheduled during workdays. And now there's a survey on the city's website that asks respondents about a variety of conceptual strategies for which there are no supporting analyses, no maps, and no explanation of the impacts. When the JWN Board planned our February General Meeting to discuss Envision Eugene, we couldn't provide members any concrete information about the potential size and location of a UGB expansion, or about future development in and near our neighborhood, or about potential impacts on housing costs, traffic, and many other issues that actually matter to residents and businesses. So what is needed more than anything at this stage is to fix the Envision Eugene process so useful maps and clear, concrete explanations of potential impacts are provided to the public before you, the council, make any significant decisions about strategies, especially regarding assumptions for housing mix and density, and the specific areas where higher-density residential and mixed-use development is to be promoted. It's also important that the Envision Eugene process be run in a more professional manner where a schedule and deliverables are established, and the city manager is accountable for meeting those targets. Far too many months of staff and public time have been squandered when we have an urgent need to do real work, including protecting our neighborhoods by fully accomplishing the ICS goals, and by getting a practical Opportunity Siting program up and running so we can realize the benefits that can arise from well-designed, properly-sited, and higher-density projects that are supported by the neighborhoods. For our part, the JWN is not waiting on the Envision Eugene process to complete. As an example, we've met with the Director of St. Vincent de Paul to discuss their projects and to identify potential Opportunity Sites in the JWN that would be suitable for subsidized and/or market-rate apartments. We're also working with neighborhood businesses, Central Latino, and Whittaker Community Council leaders to foster small-business growth in the Blair Boulevard area. When the city gets down to serious work on determining a UGB and concrete growth strategies, JWN members will be right there to contribute. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tim Schenenberg, followed by Kayla Schott-Ressler.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I support the aspirations to protect neighborhoods that are written into the document that's the subject of your hearing. I'm concerned because you're not looking at detailed maps. You'll soon be deciding the location of the Eugene urban growth boundary to provide for the residential and business needs of our community for the next 20 years. Before you make decisions regarding residential land, I ask you to direct staff to provide maps inside the existing urban area and maps outside the UGB. Inside, I want you to have access to maps that identify areas that the city manager recommends for increased density, and details to show how many more people will be able to live there within the next, you know, over the 20-year period, and the specific measures that you can implement, design standards, et cetera, as, as Jan mentioned, with the infill compatibility standards project, those design standards that will make it so that the increased density does not have a negative effect on existing residents and neighborhoods. You'll have one chance if, if the ECLA Eugene Comprehensive Lands Assessment Analysis figure of either add 1,400 acres of residential land, or find ways to increase density within the existing UGB, or a combination of the two, that's determined needed land. If you don't add the land now, don't think that the state process will make it easy for you to come back in five years and do it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Kayla Schott-Ressler is next, followed by Carlos Nixon.
Kayla Schott-Ressler, I live in downtown Eugene. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Lain Coalition for Healthy Active Youth, or ALCHE. We're a private, nonprofit advocacy organization dedicated to the prevention of childhood obesity and related diseases. ALCHE applauds the city of Eugene for its continued efforts to improve infrastructure and create transportation policies that promote physical activity, as well as for the advocacy and attention the city has given this work in the Envision Eugene Plan. We'd also like to specifically express our support for the 20-minute Neighborhoods Initiative and its treatment of full-service grocery access as a basic necessity. Access to nutritious foods is critical for maintaining a healthy population. To improve the health and well-being of people in our community, though, we must also consider our retail food environment as a whole. The severe and very much increasing human and economic costs of diet-related diseases, including diabetes and heart disease, mandate we address the oversaturation of harmful food in our long-term planning efforts. This means tackling the impact the predominance of fast-food outlets and convenience stores are having, particularly for lower-income people, and especially for our children everywhere. ALCHE urges that in the fifth pillar of the Envision Eugene Plan, "Protect, Repair, and Enhance Neighborhood Livability," the city incorporate language reflecting a willingness to assess and explore zoning and other policy change options regarding fast-food and convenience establishments. This could include setting density standards for these businesses, examining the impact of drive-throughs on human health, as well as limiting exposure to media and marketing of unhealthful foods and beverages, particularly in areas where children congregate. We've seen similar initiatives in cities around the country, and if Eugene is to continue to be at the forefront of the sustainable and healthy cities movement, we must too make ourselves a leader in this area. Taken together, inactivity and poor nutrition rank second only to tobacco as the leading cause of preventable death in the United States. 2006 Lain County Student Body Mass Index data reveals Lain County exceeds the national rate for childhood obesity. Though many of us think of Eugene as a place where good food abound, we must look at our very diverse food landscape more honestly, as resources are not shared equally. Without long-term and equitable consideration for health in our growth planning, a very dismal picture of Eugene emerges. When we envision Eugene, we surely don't picture an environment that encourages our children and are less fortunate to make bad choices. Thank you for listening. We feel very blessed to work in a place where the city is an ally in the quest for sustainable and healthy lifestyles for all.
Thank you. Carlos Nixon is next, followed by Joseph F. CDZ.
Good evening. My name is Carlos Nixon, and I live in West Eugene. I think I came tonight principally to say that Envision Eugene is a difficult thing to comment on. It seems like such a significant discussion that one wants to be engaged. Tonight's document is very impressive, but it's still so huge and so general. It's not unknown for me to spend time making reminder phone calls for meetings, for instance, when EMX proposed a route along the Amazon Creek Bike Path. But tonight, I didn't know what I would be calling people and reminding them to do. I endorse a lot of the comments that the first speaker made, in particular on specifics, and I had a couple of other specifics of my own. At the bottom of Page 1, the last bullet, there's a reference to appropriately reducing constraints for industrial development, and my question when I read that was, appropriately as judged by whom? And would this include air and water pollution standards? That kind of response was typical of a lot of, of the things where, when you're reading Envision Oregon, you want to assume good intent, but you don't know what it really means, and it's kind of scary what it could mean. Principally, I think I want to urge the resumption, not just the resumption, but the intensification of the infill compatibility process. I think we want increased density for the sustainable future, but we want it to be livable. And I would want to urge not just the resumption, but the intensification. I think that the previous, sort of, one meeting a month for two hours, we really need to get serious about this. I mean, I think, you know, let's have a meeting every week for three hours a night and really push this thing through. And if you drive around town right now, you see things being built right now that are just so destructive, you know, something really tall that's too close to something looking down into somebody's backyard. There's just so much that needs to be addressed. And so, please, 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 speed that process up for our livable neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph F. CDZ, followed by Eugene Dricks.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff, audience. My name is Joseph Sekulow-Zhenitsky. I reside at 1025 Taylor Street in Ward 1. I wrote things down so I don't forget again, like I did at the MX Open House. That was embarrassing. Anyway, I support the toxics right to no ordinance. I just want to get that right out of the way. Okay, now that the city has had the experience of major opposition to two transit corridor plans, the Coburg Road and the West 11th MX expansions, there should be a discussion and some major rethinking about feasibility of acquiring the public right-of-way needed for public transportation in all transportation corridors, and their effect on the infill, densification, redevelopment, and mixed-use plans being considered in this Eugene vision. Not all corridors are created and need to be treated equally. Not all can accommodate lanes for transit, i.e. Coburg Road and West 11th again, due to the current widths of the tarmac. A more flexible transit system can serve these areas without having a dedicated lane. How many members of the CRG, the Community Resource Group, have properties, businesses, or residences on the major transportation corridors, and how are they affected negatively or positively by the vision? How many can perpetuate their livelihoods with these development dreams? These issues need to be considered in any decision-making process that should meld land use and transportation planning. What I'm getting at is, do you think that the constituency that is most affected by the vision in these corridors is fairly represented in the CRG? And I like to point out that when we, when the Chambers Special Area Zone was created, oh, what is it, five years ago now? Five years ago? Infill does work. I'm glad we sort of set a standard there. I don't, like I say, it's a site-by-site basis, but it does work. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Eugene Dricks, followed by Ed McMahon.
Hey Eugene, it's really great to be here. Thank you. This is our second Monday this week, and I'm glad to be here. My name is Dricks, and I live on High Street. I smack dab in the middle of our town. I walk here. I love being here, and I thank you for the last, what, five years of being able to come here and just have a good time. So I stopped now. Envision Eugene is, I remember when we had the 1990 plan. That was something we were really looking forward to, and it's funny to look back at anything that starts with a 19, and here we are now in the 21st century. I noticed in our handouts tonight, there weren't many pictures, so I had trouble looking through it, but it did say "be prepared" in there, which is kind of a great watchword. So, so I wore my old Explorer jacket tonight. I don't know how many of you know any old Explorers, but "be prepared" was one of our mottos. And the future's going to be made up of things we haven't even thought of yet. There's not a clue what it's going to look like or be like. But one thing we're sure of is that most of us will be here, and it'll still be a great place to live, and work, and visit. My goal's still to put us on the global map, make people in Stuttgart come here and say, "Oh, Eugene, we've heard of you. You're the ones that do," and then plug in what we are deciding here. I'm really glad we don't have royalty in this country, because look what we have without royalty, without someone telling us what to do. We have brilliant people showing up, bringing suggestions, stuff I could never think of. I can't spell half the words we're using, and because of democracy and all that's come before us, we're able to all pitch in our voices and come up with what our future will look like. I'm excited about putting the G back in Eugene, so that's why I'm here now. I, I guess I also represent my neighborhood, the West University Neighbors. An odd name, Charlotte Lemon thought it up. Sounded friendly then. You always have to add Neighborhood Association after it. But we're the ones west of the university and kind of east of everybody else. We've got the oldest buildings. We're the densest part of town. We've got very little parking, and more buildings on the way. But we're one of the neighborhoods you drive through when you come to Eugene and you show people what Eugene's all about, and so I just want to speak up for those old buildings and, and just remind us that that's some of the pride we have to look back on. And also, schools and education. Yeah, education's very important, and education is important in everything you do, everyone you talk to, everything you say. Schools are a formal place, we can connect with it, and sure, we've got to pay for schools. And we can be creative. If I'm not just inspiring people at home that are watching this and listening to it on the internet, to come down here, send you guys some emails, send all of us, let's get some community discussions, because the solution's right in front of us, we just haven't picked it up yet, and maybe it could be as simple as a beer can. That's it. So I'm looking forward to the new Gene, Eugene. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ed McMahon's next, followed by Tom Hafredi.
Ed McMahon, I live in the unincorporated area of Santa Clara, and this evening, I'm proud to represent the Home Builders Association of Lain County. I'm here in support of the pillars that came from the CRG process, and suggest that they can be a very good tool for you to use as you're making decisions in the near future about our growth. It'll bring balance and equity to your decisions. And I'm also here in support of the Envision Eugene process. I've been the Executive Director for the Home Builders Association for 15 years, and I've never seen a process, in my opinion, as productive as this one. As a member of the CRG, I was able to observe the city manager and staff, and they reminded me of a sponge just soaking up every drop of information coming from every direction. And now they have all of that, and they're going to be presenting it to you in the near future. And it is still my hope that I can stand here with a wide, a wide variety of other citizens of this community and say that we support what they're recommending to you. After hearing some of the testimony tonight, one concern that I do have, and I don't have a solution for yet, is I hope that there's a way that we can find to, to take the honorable intent of the CRG group and express that to the community as, as a whole, because I do believe that the intent of the activities within that group were honorable and had our community at heart. And I thoroughly appreciate the process and look forward to test- And I thoroughly appreciate the process and look forward to testifying as we continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Last up tonight is Tom Hougherty.
I'd like to start by thanking all the folks who participated in the process of eight months of long, long meetings, from what I understand. I didn't go to any of them. But read the report, and I'm actually quite impressed. Seems like a good starting place, covers a lot of ground. And I have kind of written up my own vision here. There's enough for the councilors and the city manager and the mayor. I've already given one to Terry, which is basically parallel, but it provides a lot of specifics. And anyway, take your time to read it. One specific on the draft document that I noticed that I would tweak a little bit is that I think, let's see, it was in one of the ones, the fourth one, Promote Compact Urban Development and Efficient Transport Options, and the third strategy under that included transition areas from opportunity siting. And I was at a Friendly Area Neighbors meeting when they were looking at the specifics of the South Lamont Study as the first kind of opportunity site. And some people who hadn't seen it before, they felt that maybe there needed to be a transition to, not only to the neighborhoods, but like to Amazon Park and all, because the idea of having high-rises right next to the park kind of scared some people. So maybe you would want to have kind of more of a transition so it didn't just go from the parkland to, kind of like, maybe at some days, it'll be like Central Park, but not, hopefully, for a long time. Central Park was out of town in New York City, by the way, when they saved that. The other thing I know, I think that there's an urban land trust needed. I noticed that you were going to have an industrial land trust proposed, and I wasn't necessarily expecting the city to do that, but in a previous project, you know, trying to save some of the Amazon headwaters, we found that within the urban growth boundaries, a lot of nature conservancy and such would not touch anything inside of a UGB or anything that was controversial. And so part of this proposal, as I'm proposing, the vision I passed around, is proposing an urban land trust that would protect significant natural areas, historic properties, agricultural lands kind of within, just without, and since that would be taking out of the buildable space, also promote densification in the core and in commercial areas, just as you have already suggested in the plan. So, but I think, anyway, after my current project is the conclusion, I'm going there next.
Thank you. I'm going to close a public hearing, and thank you all very much for being here tonight to talk with us. Appreciate it very much. And any other comments from anybody? All right, well, then that ends the meeting tonight. Thank you all very much.